Good evening. I'd like to call the East Lime Board of Finance public hearing meeting to order. Today is Monday, April 24th at 7:00 PM. We're here in East Lime High School for this public hearing on our budget. And so I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on the agenda, I'd like to welcome Kevin Siri, the First Selectman, to walk through a couple of comments about the town budget.
Here again, this is a culmination of what seems like, well, it is, because December is when we ask the department heads to start on the town side formulating their budgets, submitting to me, and then we review them, and we get to where we are tonight. Going through the process here, again, they submit their initial request, and then in the month of January, I meet with the Finance Director and the various department heads. Couple of them we don't meet with because their budgets are so small, year-to-year tax collector, tax assessor, just so little that they asked for us, so we may not meet with them. Then, after meeting with them, I'll make some adjustments to the budget after conversations with the department heads and talking about managing available resources, and then I propose a budget to the Board of Selectmen. And then those is that will call the various department heads to the Special Board of Select meetings, and then they'll have some questions for the department heads, and then eventually the Board of Selectmen adopt the town budget, the operational budget, debt service, which we don't have much to do about, that's just a number that's in there, we have to deal with that, and the capital budget. And then we forward that to the Board of Finance. Some of the initiatives of this is two police officers, and to try and save some of the money, they would not start the academy until November, so that would be the hire date. So it saves us a total of eight months of salary and benefits. So starting nine instead of 24 months, it's 16 months of salaries and benefits. Another thing as a Deputy Finance Director and a purchasing agent, we want to get better at purchasing things, have someone who's got background and large objects. We're not talking about ordering a couple rolls of, you know, the paper or something like that, we're talking about large items, somebody who would knows how to go out and do that. And also another eyes on the town's finances. Auditors have made it clear that for several years that we need additional resources in the Finance Office, and the Municipal Finance Advisory Commission of the state is also concerned about the financing department staffing. So when the state's looking at saying you need additional resources, we figured we needed to follow their advice. Firefighters, just going back over calls for service, roughly calls have been increasing over time with for all our fire services, for not only fire, but also EMS, emergency management, medical calls. Last year in 2020, or 2021, we had about 2,096 calls. Last year we were over 3,000, and this year we're on a pace to be about 3,300. So there's a distinct increase in calls for help and for services by the firefighters and our EMTs. Regional services, what we're looking at doing is adding a Deputy Fire Marshal and Administrator, and this will be offset. We think this will actually be a cost negative, it'll be actually a positive for us, because right now, until the Board of Select meeting the other night, we never had charged for permit fees and inspections by the Fire Marshal's office. We're the only town in the region that doesn't do that. And what we estimate we'll get in those will more than cover the cost of the Deputy Fire Marshal and the Administrative Assistant, so that won't really be of any increase in the town. Challenges, spike in debt service, we'll see that in a little bit. The new bonds are coming onboard for the renovations to the three elementary schools, for the public safety building, and the ones we get every year that are for road repair and construction and so forth. So, but we do have a big spike this year, you'll see that very shortly. Decrease in state grants and aid, right now we're looking at getting about 600,000 less from the state than we thought we were going to get, although there was the State Appropriations Committee reported that they're recommending all towns be restored to the ECS level they were at in previous years. I talked to our state rep, and she said she's extremely confident that that 284 will pass when it comes to the House floor and the Senate floor, and the fact that the Speaker of the House in Hartford is one of the co-sponsors of the bill, make it even more certain that we'll probably get that. And then balancing all the needs of the departments while maintaining a fiscal responsibly budget. This is just an idea of where we started. When the department heads brought in their request, you had what we adopted last year, the 20 million 512 for town operations. And the department head's request was 22,514,794, which is about an eight and a half to nine percent increase over where it was this year. After I made some reductions, the Board of Finance made some reductions, and we actually were able to come up with a little more to give the Board of Finance to reduce at their last meeting, we're down to 4.91%. So you see what the proposed budget for town services is, 21,521,56. You see the spike in debt service, it's 26.38% more. That jump is, like I said, those bonds coming on, that'll also be the case next year, too. There's some more bonds related to the schools renovation and the public safety building coming on, so next year will be another tight year for that. Where we are able to save some money, as you can see in capital, last year was 678,000, and we got that down to a little under 500,000 this year. We were very careful what we did, and plus we had some American Rescue Plan money left. We had about 117,000. So projects that were one-time-only items, we decided we address that so the money wouldn't have to be funded out of the capital budget. What they are, things like self-contained breathing apparatuses for both fire departments, turnout gear for the Fire Marshal's office because they're getting them there, and then HVAC system, there's an account that we put money in so that as HVAC systems have problems, we can address them. Same thing with roofing, so we figured we put that in an expenditure which we wouldn't have to come out of the, we wouldn't have to tax the residents for. And that's it from our side, and I think I'll, do you want to call our cup, or? Okay. Eric Pabon, the Chair of the Board of Ed, will come up now.
Hi, everyone. So I am not going to present any slides. We have presented numerous times to numerous bodies and given everybody a lot of opportunity to comment, and what I did want to get up and do is to thank a whole bunch of people, so community members, parents, teachers, students, staff who have gotten up and provided us feedback as we've gone through. This is a real challenging budget process, and it took a lot of time and a lot of thought to kind of get to the point that we got to. And then the partnership with the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, of trying to solve this and do what's best for the town, it worked well. I think it worked well across the board, so we're all happy with where we ended up. I do think that this is a place where our district can move forward from their Board of Ed perspective, and I think we're in a good place. So, you know, thanks, everyone, and, you know, look forward to hearing what questions people have, but thanks, and passing on to Denise.
So first of all, I just want to introduce the Board of Finance members here. We have John Birmingham, who is the Vice Chair, next to him Paul Maxfield, and then Richard Steele, and Peter DeRosa. Unfortunately, Lauren McNamara had an unforeseen conflict that came up and was not able to be here tonight. So I'm going to go through a little bit of the budget process, once it got to us, what we aim for, the challenges, and then walk through the proposed revenues, expenses, capital, and then what it would mean to the mill rate and to people's taxes. So it was submitted to the Board of Finance on March 8th with an overall expenditure increase of 8.77% and a revenue increase of 8.27% from the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. This would have resulted in a mill rate increase to 25.45. We held six meetings to review and deliberate on that proposed budget, meeting with the department heads at the town and with the Board of Education. The Board of Finance proposed overall reductions to the increase of the expenditures by 1,293,559, which would reduce the increase to the mill rate to 24.98. The Board of Finance will meet tonight after tonight's public hearing to further finalize the budget, which will subsequently be voted upon at the town meeting, May 8th, and then the referendum, May 18th. So our budgetary goals, you know, we have been working over the years to increase the undesignated fund balance to get to 15% of total expenditures in the general fund. We want to do that, that shows our fiscal health and ability to withstand any, you know, unforeseen events that could take place throughout the year. We are, you know, looking at 15%, we see other towns that are higher and lower. We went through a risk analysis of everything that the town does this past year using a template that the CCM puts out, and they recommend that we have greater than 16%. I think we're comfortable at 15, but we plan to, you know, further spell that out in a fund balance policy. We want to reduce our bonded debt, that's another metric that when the rating agencies look at us, they decide, you know, how much debt per capita each town has, and that goes into their determination of what our rating should be, which is important, because the higher rated you are, then when you go to issue debt, the lower interest expense, interest rate will be assigned to those bonds. So we really want to keep some of these factors in mind so that hopefully we can get to a point where we could get a ratings upgrade. And obviously, we are always looking to limit the burden on our taxpayers. Some of the challenges, as Kevin alluded to, is the debt service, it's large, and so, you know, out of the gate, we have to look at paying back our principal and interest each year. We have to make sure we fund our pension for our retirees. So one of the processes that the Pension Board goes through is to work with our actuary to determine how much each year we are required to put towards that pension. We also look to say, well, what do we think this is going to be over the next couple of years so that we can begin to save for it or budget for it? And last year, because the market experienced quite a downturn, those losses get amortized over the next five years, and significantly will cause us to have to increase, we're looking at maybe over the next five years, we'd have to be putting 2 million a year into the pension. So these are some of the challenges that we face. We were lucky last year through the revow to have a really good grand list growth, but history has shown us that that doesn't keep going in that direction, and if we are entering into a continued economic recessionary mode, then the ability to continue to grow your grand list can be constrained somewhat. So those are some of the things that we're looking at as we look to put the budget together and try to balance all of those issues. So this is what we're looking at in terms of proposed revenues and the changes from the previous year. So I'm not going to read every number, and hopefully everybody picked up the handout that was there on the table, so you're free to look more closely as opposed to up at the screen. But obviously, an increase in taxes collected of over 4 million, issuing additional licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenues is what's coming in from the different state and federal grants, charges for services, fines and assessments, investment earnings. You know, we did very well over the past year because one of the things that we saw was the Fed increased rates every, pretty much every time they met last year. When we have funds that are collected, as everyone pays their taxes, it goes into our general fund, and we invest those excess dollars on a short-term basis, because we need them to pay the bills each month and pay salaries and what have you. So it's all very, very short-term investments in things that we're only allowed to invest in based upon Connecticut general statutes. But those rates had been for the last 10 years close to like .10 basis points, and then we were earning four and a half or even higher in some months last year. So that meant we had a really big increase in our investment earnings. You know, there's something that we watch all the time, but we were thinking that the Fed may be slowing down on any further rate increases, maybe another 25, and then maybe they stop for a while, but, you know, things could also go the other way. So we want to be conservative and not budget too high of revenue there. Our other financing sources is basically looking at use of the undesignated fund balance, again, to try to reduce the impact on our taxpayers. Onto the next slide, some of the changes in the revenues from past years was recording the motor vehicle supplemental taxes. Motor vehicle taxes work a little bit differently than your property taxes, there's a delay in getting the grand list, and so sometimes, you know, it's not reflected right away. Use of bond premium, those are funds that can be used when we issue debt and the price that we get is above par, that's what we refer to as bond premium, and so we were using that. And then the investment earnings that I just spoke about. Some of the reductions to revenue has been in state aid. Mr. Siri mentioned that there's a good chance that we could get the EC, the Education Cost Sharing Grant back restored, so hopefully that will come in. But the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes that we get from properties such as the prison or any like federally owned state or federally owned property in town, that we don't collect taxes from, but the state then gives us a payment in lieu of our ability to collect those taxes. And then tuition is down 300,000 as well. Proposed expenses, as you can see, the general government that includes not just the town operations, but every, everything else, including the debt was up 7.89, our public safety up 3.33, public works down 1.17. I don't know how Mr. Bregaw manages to do that all the time, but he is, he does a great job with his budget. Culture and Recreation up 4.76, education up 6.80, our debt service up 26.38, and the cash down 25.2%. So this means our total operating budget proposed would be 86,015,876, which is an increase of 7.16%. The capital projects that we're looking at are broken out to the different areas of government, so we're looking at 107,000 for general government, an additional 389,000 for public safety, public works, additional 1,765, culture and recreation 350, and education 1,360,000. So that kind of walks through the different revenues and expenses. So this is on Slide 17, a picture of the total operating budget summary. So as you can see, expenditures increasing 5,811,611, or 7.16%. Our revenues increasing 5,376,642, for an increase of 6.67%. So what does this mean for the mill rate and people's property tax? So this would, based upon, we had grand list growth of just a little over 1%, 1.21 is the value of 1 mil. We're using a collection rate of 98.20, which we've used historically over the years as been a generally conservative metric that comes in very close each time. We expect some delinquency, and so this walks us through, and you can see that this budget would then be an increase of 1.14 from the previous or a change of 4.78%. So that would be a mill rate of 24.98. So as you know, when you get your tax bill, you have your, you know, the market value of your home and then the assessed value. We tried to make this just a little bit clearer and say, let's just look at your home value. As you know, the assessment is 70% of the home value. So here's what it looks like. If you own a home that's valued at 300,000, you'd be paying an extra $239 a year. If you owned one that's valued at 500,000, you'd be paying about 400 more a year. If you own a home for a million, it would be an additional, you know, almost $800. So that's sort of the effect that it will have on homeowners in the, and not just homeowners, but everybody that owns property. So that is the end of the slideshow on the budget. I know we've had plenty of opportunities for the public to speak, not only at our, you know, monthly meetings, but at all of our departmental meetings. We've also had an opportunity for people to speak. So, you know, we also got lots of emails, so we tried to answer things as it came through to us. So hopefully, most everyone has had a chance to express their thoughts along the way, but we do welcome any public discussion, any public comments right now. Just want to point out that per our charter, any person qualified to vote at the annual town meeting is able to speak here at the public hearing. So that generally includes electors of the town, so someone who owns or, you know, gets a tax bill, basically. So with that, I'd like to ask if there's anyone who would like to come to the microphone And when you come up, if you could just state your name and address?
Fair enough, yeah. Someone's got to be the shy guy. Brian Zahnstecker, 65 East Patagonia Street, as well as 88 Oswegoche Hills Road, both Niantic. Thank you for this detailed overview, trying to help myself since I'm trying to sort through all the stuff, and just the, you know, really detailed diligent work that this has, you know, clearly not been an easy road for anyone. And so just as a citizen, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The main comment I'd like to make, especially in, you know, money's got to come from somewhere, and there's lots of, as you said, lots of departments, lots of things, lots of services, lots of citizens that we need to service. And I know that this, you know, basically just at the end of the day translates to, especially, I'm speaking specifically regarding the Board of Education's budget, that, you know, that that increase in mill rate has translated directly to the retention of, you know, 18 and a half teachers and educators in our town. So the key thing that I'd really like to exemplify here, and I've mentioned before, and I've sent letters to the Board of Finance, as you guys know, showing just some real data that just shows what the ROI is in every just about measurable possible way, category, socially, just pure financial, in terms of where the ROI comes back from. And now that we've gotten to the point of like literally looking at, you know, what does this mean to my tax bill for my household, the main thing I'd like to emphasize, and actually I realized when talking with the head of our host paper here the other day, is that we just always got to take the balanced perspective in it, right? And even thinking of it like, no one likes to increase taxes, and, you know, I certainly don't want to pay more, but I would think that the value, and I've tried to get data, I apologize, I couldn't put it together in time for tonight, for like looking at home values median in our area for, you know, how they've changed over the last, you know, say 20 years. And so anyways, the point is, is a lot of value that people have seen increase in their home, right? A lot of that is attributed to, you know, the product of East Lime, that what we provide, what makes it attractive for people to come here. And I looked at, you know, growth rates and pension and how we have more kind of newer people here than a lot of other towns across the entire state, which again is a testament to the, what makes it an attractive place. So getting down to the mill rate and just the dollars and cents thing, it just implore people to always consider that, remember, it's not we're paying this more, much more in taxes, this is ROI. When you talk about whatever roughly $80 per hundred thousand dollars of value that of an increase that people would be paying, like think about, you know, does that make, will this investment make your home, your property value go up even 1%? And I would think, you know, when you look at the dollars in a lot of different ways, that's almost a no-brainer investment. And so just really want to just emphasize, it's not just taxes, right? It's investment in our town, and our kids, and our services, and our state, and our revenues, and everything, and it's an investment in our home values. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments?
Hi, my name is Kim Herlock. I live at 41 Ancient Highway, East Lime. I am the Vice President of the Secretarials Union, and I would, number one, like to thank the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance for the very difficult position of doing a budget with so many issues and concerns, and we really appreciate that you have listened to us, and that's extremely important. Obviously, any budget cut was not what we had hoped for, but appreciate the difficult position of the Board of Finance, and we want to thank you for all your time and efforts. Going forward, we hope that the Board of Finance and the residents will help protect our funding and protect the vital services that East Lime students and families rely on. Our community can't afford to lose these essential services at any time when educational resources are more important than ever. I urge all of you and all the East Lime residents to support the budget and come out and vote because of all the efforts that have been done. So thank you very much.
My name is Metvi Sokolowski, 26 Whittaville Circle, Niantic, Connecticut. We lived here for 11 years. Our property value increased, but I believe our mill rate was increasing also, and our taxes over the last 11 years grew on average, I believe, around 10, 15% a year. So with this increase and home prices increase, it becomes like the taxes in the town become pretty high, and it is interesting that we are considered like a Republican town, right? And the taxes are growing and growing and growing, and nobody thinks, looks like that taxes should be going down, and I have started thinking, why is it happening? And I think there is a particular reason for this, because when the house prices are going up and taxes are going up, low-income families can't buy a house in our town. The town becomes quite unaffordable. And... The town becomes quite unaffordable, and maybe this is a specific reason why nobody, like, people, people don't want low-income families in the town, and maybe that's why we're so easy about taxes going up. And I think we should make real effort to find ways to reduce taxes, and one of the ways is competition. The main thing for us is educational budget. Why won't we just make an agreement with two neighborhood towns that parents can choose one and drive their kids either to Old Lime or to Waterford, and they can do the same? And then there would be competition, and I would think that when there would be competition, we would not hear all the time the same message from our Superintendent's Office that nothing can be done. There are -- maybe there are many other things that can be done, but we're not trying. The only thing that is going on is the same narrative, nothing can be done, nothing can be done, nothing can be done, nothing can be done. Well, if we don't try, we don't -- we -- nothing would be done. Maybe we should try to eliminate the whole Superintendent's Office and let the schools, like, run by themselves. Maybe we can do different things. I don't know. I'm not a specialist in it, but maybe we can subcontract something like Superintendent's Offices to -- and make a competition for this. I think that the narrative, nothing can be done, is a very boring and unhealthy narrative, and I know many people are very unhappy with higher and higher taxes. I don't know, like, I would prefer that there would be more people coming to the town where -- and, like, our kids would be able to afford buying a house here. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so that will -- oh, sorry, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Scott Mahon. I am not a resident of the town. I represent the East Lime Teachers Association as their president. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Finance for listening to not just the teachers, but also to the students of the district and the town. I think that you were compassionate about what we brought to you and the issues that we brought to you. I would thank the Board of Ed and Superintendent Mr. Newton for taking the reduction and doing the best that they could in order to find ways of keeping teachers. And I say keeping teachers, I do represent the teachers, but the teachers represent the students. They represent the educational process that occurs in this district, and without those teachers, you don't have that education. You don't have those services. So for me, going forward, again, I thank all of you for what you've done, but this budget, this, at least the educational portion of the budget, is razor-thin. There's no room for error going forward in this next year. I believe that we'll come out of it eventually, but we can't afford, our students cannot afford any more cuts than what has occurred to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so this concludes the public discussion agenda item. Next is board comments. I also just want to say thank you to Mr. Newton, Mary Ann Stevens, you know, working with us through the finances of it, Kevin, obviously, and the folks on the Board of Selectmen that put all that work in, and, of course, the Board of Finance. It is a lot of hours and, you know, a lot of sleepless nights wondering how we can make everybody happy. So with that, I just want to ask, do any of my fellow Board of Finance members want to say any comments? Y'all good? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. Motion carries. Five zero zero. Thank you, everyone.